Call the roll for me, please.
Commissioner Burks.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Present.
Mayor Blade.
Present. Good evening and welcome to the Fairview City Board of Commissioners. Tonight is August the fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen at seven oh two P. M. If you'll stand, please, for the prayer and pledge.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings you've given us. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The fourth item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and I believe we need to strike item eleven B and eleven C.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, Commissioner second. Scott Lucas, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I believe there was a request that we add discussion about an ordinance or resolution regarding the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant, so if we could put that, make that the new eleven B.
Okay.
Mark for discussion.
Commissioner Lucas, will you withdraw your second?
Withdraw.
Vice Mayor Rainey, will you withdraw your first?
Withdraw and motion to approve the newly amended agenda.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, second. Commissioner Lucas, any discussion? In hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
And Mayor Blade?
Aye.
All in favor?
Item five, public hearings, we have none. Item six, citizens' comments.
Cheryl Hamilton?
Ms. Hamilton, if you'll come forward, please. Yes, ma'am. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Cheryl Hamilton. My address is seven two-two-seven McCormick Lane, Fairview.
Welcome.
Thank you. My only comment was, I'm representing the Friends of the Fairview Library today, and I just want to thank the community for their constant support and to remind everybody that we are looking for volunteers. We have a nice group of people that help, but we could always use some. We are having our book sale next Thursday through Saturday, and just so everybody understands that the money we raise is primarily goes back to the Fairview Library, and we help support the children's programs, we help support adult literacy, we represent the community and the library, and as such, we just want to let everybody know we're here and we can always use your help. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Item seven, public announcements, awards, and recognitions, we have none this evening. Item eight, staff comments and monthly reports. City manager report. Mr. Collins?
Mayor, just want to thank everyone for their participation tonight. Obviously, the playground is a big investment for the city. Obviously, the meeting tonight was healthy for us. I look forward to putting the steps in place to move forward with that as a thank you to the committee or for the participation. Secondly, just to let you know that the city's audit, the auditors have been in, they've done their work. It was relatively briefly brief meeting this year. The unaudited financial reports for the city for the end of the year will be posted next week, as we post for those. We had an amended budget, you may recall, in May, so we will post the final month of the year with the amended budget. That will be posted, as I said, next week. On the next agenda, you will have a resolution by the board to make some adjustments to our financials for the end of the year. Going to explain what those are. Those are simply to recognize the receipt of assets. During the year, we did finance the fire truck, and we've taken that during the last twelve months, we've taken that fire truck into our fleet, and we did lease purchase the police fire radio communications equipment. We've taken all that equipment into our fleet. So what we'll ask the BOC to do at the next meeting is just a reconciling resolution stating that those assets have been received, so we can include those as a part of our end-of-year financial statement. So when you see that, that's just a simple answer for the receipt of those goods. We'll have the unaudited financial report posted next week, and the next meeting, September fifth, will likely be a lengthy one. This is three weeks away, but we will have a pretty long list of agenda items on there for ordinance revisions. So if you would just keep that in mind as we move forward, and that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, sir. City attorney, Mr. Potter?
Um, it's Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item nine, consent agenda.
Please to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lucas, second by Commissioner Burks. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye. Item ten, old business, we have none. Item eleven, new business. Subsection A, ordinance twenty nineteen dash seventeen. Vice Mayor Rainey?
Ordinance twenty nineteen dash seventeen, an ordinance to amend Title Twelve of the City of Fairview Municipal Code, specifically sections related to the city's fee structure for permits and fees related to construction, remodeling, building permits, and industrial, commercial, and residential development. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Rainey, second by Commissioner Dawson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Mayor Blade?
Aye.
All in favor?
Item eleven B, playground ordinance discussion.
Commissioner Rainey, I have zero experience in grant writing. It's not really in the nature of what I do, but I understand that you do have some experience with it. Can you kind of explain what that process involves?
Well, in my experience, grants are very competitive. You try to make your best shot, your first shot, because if you kind of get a reputation of not having all your ducks in a row, it makes it much harder for apply for grants for that same company. Typically, granters want to have your plan. How big is your, whatever you're working on going to be? Who's going to be in charge of that? They give you a whole list of when you have to report on those grants, the outcome of what you're planning to do. So there's lots of facts and lots of information that you have to give them. We have done grants that you have, we have literally had to list people who work in our office. So they're time-consuming. Blue Cross Blue Shield grants are very competitive. It may be that we're on the ground floor, but they're very competitive. I would hate for us to apply for a grant and not have exactly what we need, what we want, and then just dismiss any grant that we would do later on. In my department, we manage probably nine hundred thousand dollars in grants. It's, it's hard. I mean, it's, it's hard, and you've got to know exactly what you're doing. There has to be one person that manages that and knows exactly where that money is going and exactly what the plan is. So I would be hesitant to apply for a grant that big between now and the end of this month when we don't have a definite plan. Does that answer your question?
Some what?
What else do you want to know?
I tried, I did get a chance to kind of briefly look over this, but I wasn't sure about all the details. Does anyone, is Ms. Eileen still here, or she left? Okay. I was hoping she could give us a little more information. Is this a grant? From, from what I heard, it sounded like Blue Cross Blue Shield comes in, they build this, then they just kind of give it to the city. I know that's not what a traditional grant would look like. Typically, it's you're awarded X amount of funds, and you get so much of it at a time. A lot of time, it's reimbursed, so you have to be able to float those amounts, and it might be a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, twenty thousand, whatever it is, and then you get a check for it.
Quarterly, you typically would, would send in your, your receipts to be reimbursed, and I think even with this Blue Cross Blue Shield grant, I don't think it's as simple as you just come in and build what you want to build. I think we still have to have a plan as to what we want, how we want it to look, and I'm like you, I've not had time to read over the entire thing, but I think we would still have to have a plan.
I assume they would typically want to see what that budget looks like, what your timeline is, when can this start, when will this phase be done, those types of things as well. And from what I'm hearing, and anyone else here, please correct me if I'm wrong, we're not even sure what kind of playground we want yet. I've heard some really good options that sound great, but I think we have to come to a consensus first. What's the community want to see? Do we want a natural playground? Do we want more of a traditional playground? Do we want a combination of those things? I have, one concern I have with the natural playground, I like the idea. I mean, it's more like what I did as a child. I played in the creeks, I climbed trees, I fell out of trees, you know, those fun, character-building things, but those aren't really all-inclusive. And if you're writing a grant to say, we want to do an all-inclusive playground, but then you have something that's not all-inclusive, is, that's something that would cause them to deny that, because sand pits, great, but if you're in a wheelchair, you're on crutches, you're not going to be in a sand pit playing, you're not going to be climbing trees. So I think we have to be really careful with that also. I'm all for trying to get everything we can to help do this, but I just want to hear everyone else's thoughts on if we don't even know what we want to build yet, what are, does the rest of the board think that would hurt us in applying for that grant, and if we don't get it, and we want to reapply next year, do you think that could prevent us from being really considered based upon a previous grant that they just threw out? I don't know. Again, I don't do this, so that's why I'm asking.
That'd be my question for you as well. I mean, is that, does that mean we're less likely to, to get the grant next time we apply?
I cannot speak for all granters. What I've learned is if you send a grant in that is not precise and, and has lots of information in it, there are some foundations that the next grant you send in, they just kind of move yours over because they remember that you sent one in that wasn't up to their standards or up to any standard of applying, because you don't know, we don't know what we're doing. And for us to apply for a grant and say, well, we don't know how we want the playground to look, no, we don't have any committees set up, no, we don't have any structure set up, we just decided to do this two weeks ago, it doesn't, it doesn't add to our reputation. Well, it adds to it, but not in a good way.
And I kind of look at it like this, of course, we all have our opinion. This was a pretty acute thing that happened where we found out, we had to take down the playground. Here we are, a few weeks out, and this grant is coming up. We're talking about millions of dollars. We can do a lot of stuff. We can do the nature, we can do the all-inclusive. It's really endless with that kind of money that we're talking about. You're right, I think it's, I would hate, though, for an opportunity to pass this up if we could put something together within that timeframe. I've never written a grant, so my, my knowledge is very limited, but I would hate for an opportunity to pass this up. If we are in jeopardy of maybe getting pushed to the side, I would like to know specifically with Blue Cross Blue Shield, do they do that? If you send something, submit something, and they don't have everything, are they likely to do that next time? But if this is available currently, we can figure something out tonight, who's going to be leading this, we can figure out committees, we can put that infrastructure on paper, and maybe there, with your help and with others that are able to write grants, maybe we can have a good shot at it.
Well, they're going to ask us questions like, what's your footprint going to? I mean, this is seven million dollar, so you're talking about highly competitive grants. If it were a ten thousand dollar grant, I'd say that we could probably bluff our way through it. This kind of money is harder to bluff your way through it because it's that kind of money. They're going to ask questions like, what's your footprint going to be? You know, who is in charge of this? Exactly, who are your engineers? You know, they won't detail plans of what it's going to look like. So we don't have that. You're right, it's a wonderful grant, but I don't think that we have the structure in place, nor the information to apply for this grant. In a month, we'll have that, and we'll be able to put together a good presentation and a good case, and there's lots of grants out there. This is not the only grant. There's lots of grants. So I would really hate for us to just throw something together and hope it flies. That's my experience.
Has anyone actually seen the application for the grant, what they actually request?
Not the application. I've read through what I could find about the Blue Cross deal. It basically sounds like the city applied, take, like, an all-inclusive with a splash pay and a dog park, whatever. Blue Cross looks through, selects two or three per year for Tennessee, and they're basically, sit down in the city, go pay what exactly you want. So again, I understand what Ms. Rainey's saying with the grant application side, but I don't know how detailed they want to be of funds. Now, granted, the information we have of what we're desiring would be beneficial, but if I'm incorrect, Blue Cross, once everything's agreed upon, it's the city and Blue Cross, they go.
Mayor, is, is, as a point of order, we should have a meeting convening, a motion and second on the floor. So if there's going to be someone to reference or address the BOC, then they should address or be, address the BOC from the podium and identify themselves for the record.
Basically, like I said, Blue Cross builds it, once everything's been agreed, it's when they're done, they transfer it then to property ownership, the city of Fairview. So like Ms. Rainey is saying, we don't know what color we want on our swing, what are we, we don't have any of those minute details, but then again, because like Commissioner Dawson said, a lot of this transpired so quickly, now we're kind of, we're rocking a hard place, sitting around for a year, are we going to have an engineer still willing to work at the city any year? How, how do we go about something like that?
So my, my question is still, we haven't seen what they're asking, so I understand what, what Vice Mayor is saying as, as far as typical grants go, but the way I'm understanding this, and I'm on their website right now, and I actually tried to apply for the grant just to see if it would let me see what they're requesting, but the way that I read it is, if, if you're accepted into this, they then come into your community and ask you what you want to build. So it's not so much that we would necessarily, and this is not my expertise by any stretch of the imagination, that we would necessarily have to have this master plan in place of, here's what we want, and here's where, here's our, our footprint, and here's how many square feet we have, and all this kind of stuff. It's that we simply submit to them what we would like to do, a brief plan of what it is, they then look at that and decide if this is an area where we could benefit from it, and then they come in, and almost like we did with our comprehensive plan, where they meet with the community and ask, hey, what are you wanting to see in this area? From what little bit I've read on the website, that's kind of the vibe that I get, but again, it won't let me. So Ms. Eileen, do you know what they're, in order to submit this grant, what do they need from you?
They do not need a detailed plan, like you said. The town of Huntland, which is on the Alabama border, they submitted a request for an all-inclusive playground, and they came back and they gave them an all-inclusive playground and a lot of other requirements as well. So they didn't have the detailed plan, and as you said, they are going to want community input as we go. Now, I'm not real clear as to whether they come into the community and run a community meeting, or they ask us to run it and then give them the feedback. I'm not real clear how that works, but we don't have to have a, a real detailed plan for the people.
From what I'm hearing, it sounds more like it's a request for a proposal. That seems to be a lot more doable than applying for a grant, if, if that's what that is.
Yes, actually, they are asking about a project proposal.
Okay. See, I thought it was a grant.
Right, and I guess that's technically, it's technically not, because they are, as David said, they, they build it and then they transfer it to the city. And I've got the transfer document, that's probably what I did in the morning.
And, and Ms. Eileen, I know you were out for a little bit, so one of the things I'd said my concern was, if we apply for a grant, if this is more of a traditional grant, and we don't have our ducks in a row, we don't have the actual drawings, the engineering, and all those types of things, the budget, the timeline, and we don't have that, we apply, would that hurt us if we lose out and we want to reapply again? But it sounds like, and that's what I was a little confused by when I went to look this up myself, is, is it more of a traditional grant, or is it a request for a proposal, where you put together perhaps a story, here's what our community needs, here's why we need it, here's what we had done in the past to put this together, and unfortunately, it expired and had to be taken down for safety purposes, and we're wanting to redo that, and, you know, we want to have that community involvement, and you're doing that proposal, you're telling that story, and that's, I'm gathering that's more what it's like.
That's exactly it. In my correspondence with the project manager, she was very encouraging. I mean, I talked to her about everything from conservation to, you know, what happened in the past, and that they have renewed the playground and all that, and she was very encouraging. She said, please submit a proposal. So.
And it, it also sounds to me like it's not necessarily our budget, but their budget.
Right.
It's, because they have, so what is it, seven point five, is that what you said, million dollars between three people, so it may be that one facility doesn't have a larger footprint as us, so they only need one point two million, they may come into us, and we may get three million, or so, you know.
I have a suggestion. I don't have the document of the, of our master plan, but if we could just restrict whatever we put on our project proposal to what's actually on the master plan, I think that would at least make sure that the city is, has in the past agreed to that concept anyway, so that's not like we're proposing to do something that's controversial. Does that make sense?
What other concern I have, because there is a land trust, conservation trust in place, we do have to ask their permission for a lot of stuff if we want to do it. Would it be appropriate to go ahead and do that without that permission, or do we need to request that? Mr. Collins, Mr. Potter, would you all have any idea?
Commissioner Burks, in this instance, I do not believe that the city has to have the permission of the land trust for this project. The, the playground pre-existed the land trust agreement, and there's no change in the use of that area, specifically the entire recreational footprint that is shown on those documents. So for purposes of this discussion, I don't believe that the land trust is an agency that has to be consulted for the creation or development of the playground itself.
Okay. Could I, so if it's an RFP, I, I haven't looked at the whole thing, is it possible to request funds for an inclusive playground, and maybe where the, the current, let's say there's swings and a climbing, like a climbing thing behind the bathrooms? Would it be possible to also request for some sort of nature play area to put there, so when families are using the shelters, their kids could play there and still be seen by parents in the shelter?
I think, I think from what I'm hearing, though, that comes at the next step, that they're, again, going to come into the community and ask us what we want, and that would be the time when we would say, hey, we have all these areas, can we do some things at this area, and we want to do, like the one lady said, and I apologize, I'm horrible with names, with the, the all-natural play area, that could be here, and the other stuff could be here, and whatever else, but that comes if we get selected. Am I right, or?
That could be, I mean, if you want it to be restricted, the project proposal to be restricted just to put a greenhouse playground, I mean, Scott's right, we don't have to use the land trust on that, but we can look back to when we went outside. So if we just, if we just made that a proposal, that's what Huntland did, and made it a much more.
And it sounds like we have time. I mean, these projects take two years, so once we develop a plan, it sounds like we'd have time to do that, so.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, is, because I saw a map, and we've seen a lot of stuff tonight, but is that, is the, where the old playground was, is that the only recreational, so that's not the only, so technically, we could build anywhere in that recreational area?
But you need to have it, if you, if you go outside that footprint, you'd have to have it approved because
Outside of the footprint of the recreational area, or just the playground?
Playground. Because the playground pre-exists the conservation. Does that make sense? So to replace what you've already got, I don't really need permission from the conservation.
But, but it's, it's my understanding that if it's within that, we can talk about it later, but if, if it's inside of that recreational area, there are certain things that that land trust says we can do in that recreational area, and all of the things that we've discussed today would fit within that, not just the footprint of where the play is now.
Sure, you need to have it.
But I, I don't think, from what I've read of the deed, we don't have to get it approved if it's already in the deed that it's approved. There are certain things we can do, and we can talk about that at a later time, but it's my understanding, there are, there are certain things that we can do within this footprint of the, what is it called, the recreational area, is that what it's called? So we wouldn't necessarily have to get permission.
Well, if you, if you go beyond what was pre-existing, you have to get, it will probably be approved. It wouldn't be approved if we put a playground like in the area that's not the recreational area, but if we put something else like a stage area, someplace where there wasn't a stage area before, even if it's in the recreational area, it needs to be approved by the law.
Commissioner Lucas, if I may just kind of bring part of this discussion to a close, because there is a motion and second on the floor, specific to the land trust and specific to the deed. The recreational area comprises about five acres. Anything that is included in the deed as recreational activity can be installed in the recreational area with no approval or input from the land trust. That is the purpose of the land trust, to ensure that those things go in those locations. So as long as we're within that footprint, there is no requirement that you would, you would go anywhere else. Secondly, as it relates to the grant application itself, I've done several grants, probably a dozen, maybe more. It's been my experience in doing those grants, that, and again, they're all different, and different agencies, and private versus public, and federal versus state, and all such that comes along with that. However, in my experience, for grant applications of which I apply, and I knew that I was not prepared to complete the application, I used that application as an opportunity to build relationships with the decision-makers of that grant. I have applied for state, federal grants, which I knew we were not prepared, that we knew our grant application would likely be turned down. We then used that failed application. We then used that failed application as an opportunity to create relationships with the decision-makers of those grants, so that the next time we applied for one of those grants, we were prepared, and they needed to accept our prepared application. So yes, there is a risk in applying for one that you're not prepared for. You can also use it as not to open a door with the decision-makers and say, "We are Fairview, we're going to apply for this grant, we know we are not prepared. However, we will be prepared when the next round comes around, let us explain to you who we are and why we're doing this thing." I have not lost one since from, from doing those. So I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, but there are opportunities to, to go forward with, with the consideration of it, so.
One, one thing we need to also think about when we're writing this, I guess it's more of a proposal. Williamson County is one of the wealthiest counties in the nation. And, and that hurts us in some ways. When people say, "Well, why, why do you need the money?" But we have to be able to point out, even inside this wealthy county, we're the rural area of it. You know, our median income is much, much less than everywhere else in the county. Not only is it less, it's actually declined where everywhere else in the county the median income has increased. I believe some of our schools still, some of our elementary schools may still receive, I think. I was thinking West, Westwood had lost that a couple of years ago. Okay. Okay. And that we can point out that we have that here, and that need, that may also help in that process. Also, we can hopefully point out that there's nothing here for kids to do. I mean, we, we have nothing other than this park and that playground that was there. And some of these things to consider when writing that proposal. I know we have a motion on, but I just wanted to go ahead and throw these ideas out there while we have it open. Anyway, those are some of my thoughts.
What is the motion again? I'm sorry.
I don't believe we have one.
I don't think we have a motion.
I was, I was wrong in that, there was, forget what I said about the motion part. My man, are we on TV?
All right. Well, normally, we have the motion and the discussion. So at that point, I'll make a motion that we authorize the city to go ahead and apply for this grant, or submit a proposal, whatever that may be, for this Blue Cross Blue Shield fund.
Second. Were you finished? You all got called out one time for seconding one of your motions before it was time. Were you finished?
I'm finished now.
Second.
We have a first by Commissioner Burks, a second by Vice Mayor Rainey. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Blade.
Aye.
Item 12, communications from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Burks.
Again, I want to apologize for being late earlier at the workshop. I had a court hearing that went much, much, much longer than it should have up in Bedford County. And I want to thank everybody who did show up, our presenters, especially with Mary's Playground that came from pretty far away, that's not a member of our community, but was still willing to come forward and help us with some ideas. And hopefully, that's a resource that will remain out there that can be helpful. I'd like to thank the citizens that showed up, that's probably the most people I've ever seen at all our meetings combined, I think, that were here earlier. So thank you for being involved. Please continue to get involved, get your neighbors involved. This is a process that's not going to be necessarily very fast, it's not going to be very easy, and we're going to need help. And that help's going to be from our community. It can't just be people on Facebook saying, "Yeah, I, I want to do it," and then you never hear from them. We need people to actually come and show up. And I know, I'm not fussing at people, because I know people work, I know people have kids. I have all those things to do as well, as well as run a business. And I know it's difficult to come to these things. So I do appreciate everyone who does. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dawson?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. So Tuesday, I was, I had the honor of riding around in the chipper truck, the city chipper truck, with Todd and with Blake. And it was 2,000 degrees outside with us picking up leaves and brush and so forth. And I got to tell you, those two guys are salt of the earth and two of the hardest workers I have ever seen in my life. And we are privileged to have them as employees here at Fairview. What they do on a day-to-day basis in public works, it is hard work, it's thankless work. And once again, I just, I, I want to tell them how much I appreciate them on being employees for the city. And, and I appreciated being with them all day, it was just, just amazing. The, the second thing I've got, how many of the wreaths have we given out? Scott?
None.
None? Well, darn it. I was hoping that was going to be a big, a big deal. We, we had one of the citizens contact me and said, "You know, it would be a great idea if, if we maybe had a love offering of 20 bucks per wreath." That's probably not going to make anybody more apt to come to City Hall and get a wreath. But, you know, I would love to see wreaths on all of our telephone poles, I think it's a great idea. I think it is distinguishing for our city. I, I think it makes it feel more like Christmas. And i- if we could do something to add to the pot to get those up, you know, one year, if it's this year, next year, or whatever, I, I just love the thought. I, I think it makes the city look beautiful. So it doesn't sound like there's a big desire, or big, um, big need for the ones that we have, so that may not be a good suggestion. So I'm just going to stand with where we're at, I guess.
We, we would love for them to find new homes.
Okay.
We, we have, we brought samples at the last meeting, we can make those available. They, they are a little, a little big, a little heavy, but they're, they could serve a purpose on the right sort of decoration. So if anyone wants to come by and take a look and see if they're interested in one, we, we have both of those available for, for anyone to inspect, and we make those available either for them to pick up if they want one, we can deliver it if we needed to, whatever we need to do to, to make them available for anyone who'd like to have one.
So, okay, that sounds good. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody again, as Commissioner Burks said, for coming out tonight. I know this is a passionate issue for everyone in the community, and I think, I think I can speak for everybody that we just want it done right. And I think we're going to get it right, and I'm excited about it. Thank you to the three presenters, and again, I'm horrible with names, that took the time and the energy to put these different proposals together and do all this research and all of this stuff. So I'm excited about it, whether it's a Blue Cross Blue Shield grant, or as a community, we just come together and, and somehow raise all this money. I'm really excited about what's eventually going to be out there. So thank you for your support tonight, and hopefully, we can continue that moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Rainey?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I too would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It was one of the largest crowds that I've ever seen in this meeting room, and it was very refreshing to have the input that we had. If you would, please, ensure people that we are serious about the playground. There have been many negative comments against this board, that we don't want to do anything, we're not going to do anything. Please assure them that that is not true. We are very committed to this cause. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Collins?
Mayor, just as, I know we're about to adjourn, but just as a reminder for anyone who is here, if they can, they're, we're going to have an informal work session to kind of craft a plan going forward, so I expect that would, it'll take less than four hours.
Mr. Collins, that would still not be our longest meeting.
Understood, yes, sir.
No, it would not.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.